Hello. We're going to get started shortly here. If we can have folks take their seats. So I will invite our elder, Chris Matonumpa, if you would like to join us up here at the front, and Koya Whitehead-Ardachoker. And then we also have folks from Little Earth. And if they could join us up here at the front, that would be wonderful. Do we have some folks from Little Earth that want to just join us up here? Thank you. And we have many other groups and organizations in the room today for this very important issue that is, has been happening for a while now in our American Indian community. And I wanted to thank many of the groups that are here today. M-Perg, MN350, Little Earth, NACTI, American Indian OIC, Minnesota Indian Women's Resource Center. If you want to join us, Arianna, you're more than welcome to. And Council President is joining us too, right here. So we wanted to have the opening be opened up by our Indigenous elders here in our Indigenous community, and then the council resolution will follow.
Did you want to say anything? Okay. I'm going to read my name.
Okay.
"Oh, mitakuyapi. Owasi chante washteana pechusapido." In the language of the First Minnesotans, the Dakota people, when translated, this is a greeting, and it means hello, my relatives. With a good heart, I greet all of you with a handshake. First of all, I wish to thank City Council member Alejandra Kano for inviting me to make some remarks about the Dakota Access Pipeline blockade. I know that just some of my relatives just went up this week to stand in solidarity with them. And eventually, my wife and I would probably make a trip up there too and stay and stand with them as well. Also, secondly, I wish to thank Cam Gordon over here on the city, also on the city council, for helping to pass the resolution and the Minneapolis City Council resolution, which I wrote back in 2012, which was the 150th anniversary of the tragic and traumatic events of the Dakota-US War of 1862. And the resolution was titled, "The Year of the Dakota: Remembering, Honoring, and Truth-Telling." As I understand the situation, Dakota Access has failed to consult with the Native peoples and to conduct a full environmental impact statement, which by law, they are required to do so. If the pipeline were to leak, there would be disastrous effects upon the water, the earth, and upon the animals. And in the worldview of the Oyate, that's a Dakota word which means people, and the Oyate consists of the Dakota, the Lakota, and the Nakota. Many, our word for water, is considered wakan or sacred. Water is also considered as pejuta or medicine. Finally, water is viewed as wichoni or life. A pipeline leak would have a negative impact for the tens of thousands of people, the animals, and the ranchers and farmers who depend upon the water from the aquifers. Secondly, there is a teaching among the Oyate, the people, which regards the earth as inamaka or Mother Earth, or as unchimaka, Grandmother Earth. This is true not only for the Dakota, but also seems to be true for the other traditional Indigenous peoples of the Americas. The same things that apply to the human mother would also apply to Mother Earth. Things such as love, caring, respect, and honor. A leak in the pipeline would contaminate our mother, the earth, as well as demonstrating great disrespect for ina or mother. In our ceremonies, we sing and pray to unchimaka, Grandmother Earth. Thirdly, animals are regarded as people and as relatives. We are taught to show respect for the animals, our relatives. The traditional Dakota does not kill animals like the deer, or the buffalo, or fish for sport. They kill it to survive, to eat. And there's a story, and many of the Indigenous peoples here have stories which talk about why there is this teaching of an attitude toward the animals. And Dr. Charles Eastman, in one of his books, talks about this as well. When our people say mitakuye, owasi, or all my relatives, this phrase also includes our animal relatives, even things that are regarded as inanimate objects by Western science, such as stones or boulders. In one of our ceremonies, the Inipi, a purification ceremony, we refer to the Tunka Oyate, the stone people. And we refer to the stones used in the Inipi as the grandfathers. Also, we say things like wambidi Oyate, the eagle people, or the shuntanka Oyate, the horse people, or we say the hechaka Oyate, the elk people, et cetera. In the 524 years, the Western Europeans and the US Euro-Americans have been here in the Americas, it has not been good for the Indigenous peoples, nor for the environment. There has been much stealing, killing, and destroying that has occurred. I think of the Bible verse in which Jesus Christ says, quote, "The thief cometh not but for to steal and to kill and to destroy," which is found in the Gospel of John, Chapter 10, verse 10. "The thief has stolen approximately 3 billion acres and has made and broken 400-plus treaties, has killed approximately 16 million Indigenous peoples within the continental United States, and has destroyed our ways of life, our languages, and has suppressed our spirituality and criminalized our religious ceremonies." There's no religious freedom for traditional First Nations people. Finally, "The thief has contaminated and polluted the waters, the air, and the lands, including the fracking and the pipelines." All of the preceding I, Matonumpa, referred to as washosicha tankaki, the Great Evil, which began 524 years ago. We, the Indigenous peoples of the United States and the Indigenous peoples of the great state of Minnesota, call upon today's descendants of the thieves, the land stealers, of the treaty breakers, the takers, and the destroyers, to stand with the Dakota, the Lakota, and the Nakota and other Indigenous peoples as they struggle to stop the Dakota Access Pipeline, to stop further contamination of the land, the waters, and the air. The implications of projects such as the Dakota Access Pipeline project affect not only just Indigenous peoples, but also all the peoples of the planet. As one writer put it, "We must now, quote, 'sing to the same drum, lock together in our common humanity and our common destiny.' Ultimately, we must all go forward together, or we are lost to the evil which has engulfed the land we mutually inhabit." Love water, not oil. Thank you.
That was beautiful. Thank you. So since you went a little long.
"How chante washteana pechusapé. Mialo tachege washtewi." Good morning. My name is Koya Whitehead-Ardachoker. And I just wanted to, grateful to be asked to speak today and wanted to emphasize the historical significance of what's happening in North Dakota, that this is the first time since the Battle of Greasy Grass that these seven council fires have come together, and how important that is. And the last time we did that, we killed Custer. And to also say what Chris also mentioned, that the state itself has the word water in it, in our language, that this state carries our language and the importance of water in the name. And then the last thing is that I'm really happy as somebody who is Sichangu Lakota from Rosebud, South Dakota, and that is my tie. I'm part of the seven council fires. And as somebody who's lived in Minneapolis for 20 years, to see the city take this kind of stance in support of what the folks in North Dakota are doing is really important to me personally. And to, especially when we see so many examples of environmental racism that happened in this state, like Perry Island and our relatives who live next to a nuclear reactor, and the Little Earth folks, who are also going to speak, but are living in East Phillips, next to Roof Depot and Smith Foundry, and experiencing the effects of that. So I'm proud to see the city take this stand. And I want to just also emphasize something that our relatives in the north are saying is that they are not protesters, they are protectors of the land.
Thank you to both of our speakers. And so I will now present our resolution and read it to the community. This is a resolution expressing solidarity with Indigenous resistance to the Dakota Access Pipeline. Whereas the proposed Dakota Access Pipeline would carry as many as 570,000 barrels of fracked crude oil per day for more than 1,100 miles from the Bakken Oil Fields of North Dakota to Illinois, passing over sensitive landscapes, including treaty-protected land, containing recognized cultural resources, and across or under 209 rivers, creeks, and tributaries, including the pristine Missouri River, which provides drinking water and irrigates agricultural land in communities across the Midwest. And whereas, despite deep opposition from the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe, as well as farmers, scientists, more than 30 environmental advocacy groups and other tribal nations along the proposed route, and without tribal consultation or meaningful environmental review as required by federal law, in July 2016, the US Army Corps of Engineers issued a permit allowing construction of the fracked oil pipeline to move forward. Whereas, in a show of monumental cooperation not seen in the 140 years since the Battle of the Greasy Grass or Custer's last stand, members of the Lakota Standing Rock Sioux Tribe have united with the Ochetti-Sacoen, the Seven Fires Council, which include the Confederation of Lakota, Dakota, and Nakota Nations, and established a peaceful encampment in Cannonball, North Dakota, known as the Sacred Stones Camp, to resist the construction of the Dakota Access Pipeline with a cultural and spiritual presence. And whereas, on August 15, 2016, the Standing Rock Sioux Tribal Council, led by Tribal Chairman David Archibald II, called on tribal nations and Indigenous people around the world to issue resolutions in support of the Standing Rock Sioux and the Sacred Stones Camp. Whereas Minneapolis is home to the highest concentration of urban American Indian families in the United States and is the birthplace of the American Indian Movement, signifying a legacy of activism and civic engagement which continues to this day as many Minneapolis residents, including youth and Minnesota tribal members, have been inspired to take action and join the Sacred Stones Camp to protect our environment and Mother Earth. Whereas, the city of Minneapolis understands the importance of recognizing the specific challenges facing the original inhabitants of this land and honoring their contributions, symbolized through the adoption of their American Indian Memorandum of Understanding, the observation of the Year of the Dakota in 2013, and the Declaration of Indigenous Peoples' Day each October. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Minneapolis, that we stand in support of the Indigenous opposition to the Dakota Access Pipeline, and we call on all residents of Minneapolis to raise awareness about this important struggle for Indigenous sovereignty and environmental justice and to support the Sacred Stones Camp efforts in any way that they can. This is a copy of the resolution. Thank you. We'll have to get some signs that are more formal and official. So with that, thank you so much. And Council President is going to address the group.
Thank you all for joining us this morning. My intention, as part of our agenda this morning, is to add this resolution through a motion from Council Member Kano to our agenda this morning. And then it will be referred to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee for consideration. Thank you very much for joining us. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Fry.
Here.
Palmasano.
Here.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich is absent.
Bender.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a quorum present. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. And as I said, Council Member Kano has a motion to include, under the order of resolutions, a resolution expressing solidarity with Indigenous resistance to the Dakota Access Pipeline. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next item on the agenda then is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 5, 2016, and the adjourned session held August 10, 2016.
So I move.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The next items on our agenda, the reports of the standing committees. And the first committee to report is Committee of the Whole. And that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two items on the agenda for today. The first is approving the Creative City Roadmap Report and directing staff to further the implementation of plan, goals, and objectives. The second is the passage of a resolution creating a Workplace Advisory Committee tasked with reviewing policy and advising policymakers on workplace-related issues. And I would move both items.
Council Member Glidden has moved the Committee of the Whole report. Any discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Community Development and Regulatory Services. And that committee is chaired by Council Member Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward 11 items for approval this morning. Notable items include item number one, which is a land sale for the expansion of North Point Health and Wellness at 2200 Plymouth Avenue, as well as a number of liquor, beer, and gambling licenses. I'll note, item number nine is negotiating exclusive development rights for property the city owns at 205 Park Avenue South. And item number 11 is approving the 2017 license fee schedule. With that, I'll move all items, 1 through 11, for approval this morning.
Council Member Goodman has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services report. Anyone want to pull anything off on that agenda? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye on all items, except no on item 7.
There are 12 ayes on the report except for item number 7, which has 11 ayes and 1 nay.
The next committee to report is the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. And that committee is chaired by the Council Vice President, Elizabeth Glidden.
Thanks, Madam President. There is just one item on the agenda. It's approving a mediation settlement with Exile Energy regarding street lighting rates in the Minnesota Public Utilities Commission docket. And I will move approval of that item.
Council Member Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That item is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation and Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Council Member Reich, but the report's going to be given by the Vice Chair, Council Member Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are 11 items for your approval this morning. The first is our designee for the wet, to make decisions on behalf of the city for the Wetland Conservation Act. The second is a grant submission, our Open Streets Agreement for next year, the Blue Line Final Environmental Impact Statement comments, Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program funds, construction of the traffic signal and pedestrian ramps at 60th Street and Xerxes Avenue South, stormwater vegetation management contract amendments, the Intelligent Transportation System Enhancement Project, the Riverside Extension Reconstruction Project, 3rd Street and 46th Street East signal upgrades, and the Niklet Central Modern Streetcar Project Contract Amendment. I move all items for your approval.
Council Member Palmasano has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
Those items are adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Committee. And that committee is chaired by Council Member Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means Committee brings forward 10 items for your consideration this morning. The first is an appointment to the Minneapolis Television Network Board. There's four members that were appointing to that board. Second item is a contract amendment with LifeTech Training LLC. Third item is a contract amendment with Robert Half International for financial reconciliation services. Item number four is a grant acceptance from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety for Youth Violence Prevention Services. And five is Minnesota Green Corps host site agreements with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. Six is a contract, several contracts actually, with Assessment Associates International, Curfew Leadership Solutions, and DRI Consulting for Management Assessment and Related Services. We also have a contract with Select Account for Benefits Administration Services. Item number eight is a contract amendment with Hennepin County Medical Center for changes to the scope of services agreement. Item number nine is a contract amendment with Sierra Cedar Inc. for ongoing enterprise land management system production and training. And the final item is a gift acceptance from the American Society for the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals to the Minneapolis Animal Care and Control Unit. I'd like to move all 10 items for your approval.
Council Member Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Committee report. That committee is chaired by Council Member Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items from zoning and planning. Item number one is a street vacation for Metro Transit on part of 7th Avenue North. Item number two is a rezoning at 333341st Street East to rezone to add an industrial-living overly district there to allow for industrial and residential uses. And item number three is updating our zoning code to redefine half-stories. You have an amended resolution in front of you authored by me. I think I've spoken with all the council members who had interest in this. This just clarifies that the change only focuses on buildings that are over three stories and does not include two-and-a-half-story buildings. So I will move items 1 through 3.
Council Member Bender has moved the zoning and planning report with the zoning and planning item number three, the motion in front of you that clarifies the definition of half-story. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Council Member Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar, and the first is pursuant to notice, Councilmember Bender is introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to heritage preservation, heritage preservation regulations for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee amending regulations governing Heritage Preservation Commission membership. On Councilmember Bender's introduction, any discussion? Councilmember Bender.
I just wanted to clarify, it sounds kind of like a big deal. This is just amending the way that we appoint commissioners to this commission. Unlike our others, it has term limits, and it also had very specific instructions as to who is supposed to be part of the interview process. So we're just cleaning it up so that it's more consistent with our other boards and commissions.
Thank you. Any discussion then on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Then we have the redesign of the Niklet Mall ordinance pursuant to notice, motion by Councilmember Goodman, Frye, and Reich to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to streets and sidewalks, Niklet Mall, for first reading and referral to TPW, amending provisions related to the redesign of Niklet Mall. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have pursuant to notice, motion by Councilmember Quincy and Councilmember Palmasano to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the building code for first reading and referral to zoning and planning, adding a new chapter 119 entitled Aircraft Noise Attenuation. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Next, we have Skyway Design Requirements Ordinance, motion by Councilmember Gordon and Palmasano to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to the zoning code, administration and enforcement for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee, adding requirements for design of skyways. A unanimous consent is required for that introduction. Any discussion on that item? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, we have unanimous consent. That is introduced. Next is a motion by myself to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to land subdivision regulations for first reading and referral to the Zoning and Planning Committee amending the Parkland Dedication Ordinance. And I would just explain that we have met, Councilmember Frye and myself have met with the Park Board, Park Board staff, several commissioners, to discuss some changes to the Parkland Ordinance, and if you remember, we have to adopt identical ordinances. So we're getting going on our part. This will go to the Planning Commission, and then back to us in the Park Board, then we'll consider the same amendments. So on that motion, we need unanimous consent, so I would move that. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. Under Resolutions, we have the 2016 Chiari Malformation Awareness Day Honorary Resolution, passage of a resolution recognizing Chiari Malformation Awareness Day in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. We have the 2016 Spina Bifida Awareness Honorary Resolution, passage of a resolution recognizing Spina Bifida Awareness in the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed, that carries. And number four is the Indigenous Resistance to the Dakota Access Pipeline Resolution, passage of a resolution expressing solidarity with Indigenous resistance to the Dakota Access Pipeline. I will move that that item be sent to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Glidden.
Thanks, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to note, this is sort of a traditional piece of our process, that something like this with some substance would move through our committee process. I did, though, also want to ask to add my name to the resolution as an author. We got the language yesterday from Councilmember Kano, and I know that council members have been doing their homework in that time, and this will give us just a little bit more time to do that, but I've been able to do enough that I feel like I would like to add my name as an author, which I will just note then takes the listed authors to 11, which is an overwhelming majority of the council, that is not only supportive, but wanting to put their name on this, on this piece of policy. So, thank you, and thank you to Councilmember Kano.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say that Council Vice President Glenn and I had a brief chance to touch base about this here during the meeting, and I am happy to move this and support this to the IGR committee, so that we can have a broader conversation about the implications of this on our community. Many folks in Minneapolis are at the Dakota Camp as we speak. Many more plan to go there in the future. There is a very strong connection to our local economy, especially around the wild rice economy, and how that impacts the issues of pipelines, and how that's impacting the American Indian families here in Minnesota and in Minneapolis. So I welcome a more thorough conversation about this issue. I think this is a good signaling for our community and for the issue in general, is that we're paying attention, that we know this is an issue that will impact our pristine waters, not only here in Minnesota, but also in our region. And of course, everybody knows that we can't drink oil, but we can drink water, and that's what this resolution is really all about, is ensuring that we are protecting the importance of clean water in our communities, and ensuring that we are moving forward on a transition to a fossil-free future. So I think that this makes sense, and I just wanted to let the community know that the next IGR or Intergovernmental Relations Committee will meet on Thursday, August 25, at 1:30 here in council chambers, and I would likely be reaching out to some folks to come and be a part of that conversation as well. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to say, when this came to me yesterday evening, I was a little bit concerned about it. I don't know what the right language would be for a resolution like this. I am comforted by the fact that our IGR staff stayed really late last night and reviewed it, along with others, along with former council members. Robert Liligren played a role in helping to shape the language and it being something we could pass today. I don't know why this had to be such a fire drill, so I appreciate delving into, more into important matters like this, so I'm looking forward to hearing that that's coming on August 25. I do really wish we'd have thought of it in enough time to go through IGR, because it would have honored it more, would have educated us all a bit more on it. So I, without the idea that we don't have time to vet this, and I am comfortable with this modified language, with the language we have in front of us today, and I look forward to more discussion on it on August 25 as well. So I will be supporting this today.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. So one of the reasons why this was, why my office decided to introduce this this week and talk about the issue this week is because on August 15, the Standing Rock Sioux Tribal Council, led by Tribal Chairman David Archibalt, called out to the community, to other government groups, and to other Indigenous people around the world to issue resolutions on this issue. So this was a way to respond to that call to action, and obviously, I come from a community, and I come from a value system where standing up for the environment is common sense. It's actually not a radical act. It's a very preservative act in terms of thinking about the future of our children and how we are in an age of climate change where every single action that we take, that we take matters, and it matters if we are able to move the dial in, in our ability to protect Mother Earth and the life that it sustains, which includes us as human beings.